Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Riska, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mrs. Zerco.
Present.
Thank you, council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool, Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin by informing everyone that a new and exciting program in Sterling Heights will be a topic of discussion tomorrow at the North American International Auto Show. The Robotics Center in Sterling Heights is a new initiative to create a research and implementation facility that will enhance current STEM education initiatives for the entire region. The center will be made available to all FIRST robotic teams, post FIRST graduates, career technical education centers, startups needing access to resources for robotics innovation, other high school students and post-high school individuals. The goal is to engage students to have a passion for combining informational technology and manufacturing technology. As a Robotics Collaboration Center project continues to move forward, and this is something we've been working on for the past couple of years, the attention has shifted towards implementation and startup of a not-for-profit organization. The Macomb County Planning and Economic Development Department via grant from the Michigan Defense Center, which also happens to be located in Sterling Heights, has retained Miller Canfield and public sector consultants to assist in creating this organization. The goal is to create an organization that can work with industry, academia, K-12 education in a flexible, creative, and innovative way. So tomorrow, private stake- private sector stakeholders consisting of potential funders, supporters, and board members of the new organization will gather at the auto show to discuss this exciting opportunity. And we hope by the end of 2019, the Robotics Collaboration Center and the organization will be created, the board will be in place, and certainly the city of Sterling Heights will have a representation on the board, and also funding will be secured by that point. So the city of Sterling Heights has been front and center in this endeavor since it started a couple of years ago, and we're really excited that we're moving closer to now creating the organization with a kickoff meeting tomorrow. And I wanted to draw your attention to the screen in front of you, just to show you a couple of renderings, what the Collaboration Center will look like, so you can get a feel that it is just that, Robotics Collaboration Center, involving a lot of high school students and younger individuals, working with industry and businesses, as I mentioned. And fortunately, there is a lot of great attention on this, as school superintendents are super excited about the program, so we're very confident that it's going to be very successful. So stay tuned for more information on the city's first-ever Robotics Collaboration Center. And speaking of new technology, we're very excited to debut new software that will help the public better understand the city's budget process and all that we go through to challenge- to balance a budget every year, which can certainly be somewhat challenging from year to year. So we're going to talk about some interactive options this evening that citizens can use from home to see what we go through to do the balancing. And with us this evening is our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Barney, who's going to take us through that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mr. Kaszubski, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm very excited to be here tonight to present two additions to our website that will increase budget transparency and allow residents to provide feedback on budget priorities. Balancing Act is an interactive budget simulation that offers a simplified graphical representation of the general fund budget. When a resident opens Balancing Act, they will come to this screen. The graph on the left is titled Where the Money Is, and it represents the general fund expenses. Each section of the graph represents a different department, and by clicking on one of the sections, more detail will be opened. So you can see here, the blue section represents the police department, and when we click on it, the police department detail to the right opens up. You can see the total budget for the police department, and then the four different departments within the police department, and how that makes up the total. You can click on the information icons to see more information on each line item. So for example, if we looked at police operations and click on the information, first we get a brief description of the responsibilities of the department, and then by clicking on More Details, you are taken to a graph of the expenditure history, and if you want even further details, there is a link to the actual city budget document, but it will take you to the exact page of the department that you're looking at. So similar information is shown for each department. We can see if we clicked on Fire Department, Public Works, and so on. So each department has some information and also graphs, and then you can get more detail by being directly taken to the budget. Next is the revenue. If you scroll down, you see a graphic representation of this general fund revenue, a different color for each type of revenue. You can see here, purple represents city taxes, and by clicking on it, more detail is opened, and you can see the different types of taxes the city collects: city operating tax, police and fire pension tax, refuse tax, and Safe Streets. And again, there is informational icons to get more information and graphic representations of the information. Lastly, the- at the top, you can see whether the budget is in a surplus or a deficit. This graphic represents the general fund budget, which is currently in a surplus, which means we will be adding about $900,000 to the general fund budget. Now Balancing Act is not only an information tool, it also allows residents to give feedback on budget priorities. So let's return to the police department. Now so if a resident believes that we should increase funding to the police department, they would click on there's- there's a plus sign and a minus sign for their funding feedback. So to increase funding, you would click on the plus, and it goes up or down in 1% increments to the budget. And notice also how the surplus number at the top has now gone down to $540,000. So let's increase funding in the fire department and the library. So notice now that the funding at the top has now turned to a deficit, which you can see by it's turned green from red, and it is also in a negative. And now let's see if we can submit our budget in a deficit. So when we click Submit, you'll get a note that you cannot submit a budget that is deficit because the budget, just like here, the budget must balance. So now you would need to return and either decrease expenses or increase revenues to get a balanced budget. So let's try to increase taxes to cover our deficit. So you can click on the plus here under Increase Taxes, but you'll notice that you can only increase them so much, and then you'll get a notice that you- we cannot increase our taxes above the headly limit without a vote of the people. But now our budget is balanced, we're back in the green, and we can hit Submit. And some demographic information is asked for before you submit your budget, but you do not have to fill any of that out if you choose not to. And there's also a place to add- ask- give some feedback on how you felt about the Balancing Act tool. And then after you confirm that you're not a robot, which is going to be difficult. Sorry. Okay. Get my time here.
Top middle.
All right, I'm not a robot. I can submit my budget.
We were worried for a minute.
I was getting worried too. You'll see a summary of the increases that you made to the budget, the revenue, and then you also have an opportunity to invite family and friends to try Balancing Act through either Facebook, Twitter, or email. Now the city- the feedback will go back to the city through a dashboard that will give us a lot of information. It shows us how many people have looked at the tool, the average time they spent on the site, how many submissions have been sent in, and also the demographic information of the people that responded to the survey. And then we can download a report of the changes people made, and you can also make comments about why you changed a particular line item. So Balancing Act will go live on the city website on February 1st, and in its current form provides a more user-friendly way for residents to learn about the budget and give general feedback on budget priorities. In the future, we can use Balancing Act to get feedback from residents on specific issues and concerns. Specific questions can be developed and posed to the public for input, and it can also be used as an educational tool for the Safe Streets Milled Renewal. Now a second tool that we're going to be adding to our city's website is called Taxpayer Receipt. And when you open Taxpayer Receipt, you will be prompted with a few questions. The first is if you- do you own a home? And by clicking Yes, you will be taken to a second prompt that will ask for the tax about- about, excuse me, taxable value of your home. Now if you know that value, you can just enter it, but if you don't, we provide a simple way for you to look it up by clicking on the information icon, and then you will be taken to a link to our BSNA website where you can enter your street address, choose your home, and then scroll down to find your taxable value. In this case, the number is 97-804, which we would go back and enter here. So this will- this way you can see exactly how your tax dollars are spent. Let me make this a little bit bigger. So this is a tax receipt, approximate tax receipt for your home based on your taxable value. So first you can see it shows how much we collected in city-only taxes, about $1,700, and then it shows each city department, so how much of your tax dollars are used to fund specific departments. So in this example, you can see the police department, about $400, the fire department, $228, Public Works, so on. You can also see if you scroll down, how much goes to local road construction from Safe Streets, about $77, recreating recreation, and so on. And then if you keep scrolling down, just so the tax bill is complete, we show a summary of the non-city taxes, so the taxes that we collect on behalf of the schools and the county, and how much those total. And then the bottom line comes within, everyone I've checked, about $1 of your summer and winter tax bill for 2017. So I believe that Balancing Act and Taxpayer Receipt offer two powerful new tools for residents to learn more about how their tax dollars are used and to provide input into city priorities. And I'm very excited to see how residents will use and respond to these new tools. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing everyone's feedback when you use the software. And Mayor, continuing on, as many of you know in the audience, cities across the country are in the midst of an opioid crisis fueled in large part by illegal drugs made readily available by drug dealers. This crisis has become overwhelming and is exhausting local resources, to say the least. Sterling Heights has been on the leading edge of developing a more collaborative approach required to attack this crisis. With us this evening is Police Chief Dale Jawodkowsky to discuss the new task force that was announced just yesterday.
Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, members of council. Yes, we have a couple exciting new initiatives at the police department that I want to briefly cover tonight. I'm very proud of these changes and upgrades the police department, and I want to outline them both tonight. Again, moving forward, any kind of initiative that we start at the police department, there's a three-pronged test, and as soon as my cursor works here. It did. Oh, did I, uh, hmm, technical difficulties, there we go.
Yeah, I think we're going to be good here in a second.
Yes. Okay, again, before we start any initiative, there's a three-pronged test that we go through, and the first is, does it keep Sterling Heights any safer? And Sterling Heights enjoys a great reputation nationally, is the sixth safest large city in the United States. The second thing is, does it increase services to the public? Is this an increased, enhanced benefit to the public? And the third thing is, it maintaining fiscal responsibility? All three of those things have to be checked up before we move forward with any- any new project or initiatives. And both of these programs do, the new DEA Task Force and the ICAC program, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. The DEA program, which was just announced yesterday at a large press conference in Warren, is a collaboration with the United States Drug Enforcement Administration and five local Macomb County police departments: Chesterfield, Macomb County Sheriff, the Warren Police Department, Sterling Heights and Clinton Township. Chief Dwyer in Warren and myself worked with the DEA starting this summer to talk about a new concept group that would fight large-scale narcotics cases in Macomb County. It took us months of negotiation to get to this point, and I'm proud to say that we did pull it off. We had these five inaugural agencies join with us and the DEA, and we had a large press conference yesterday in the city of Warren to kick off what we think is going to be a very beneficial relationship. And Phantom is the name of that group, Federal Anti-Narcotics Task Force of Macomb. And again, five local departments and three DEA agents will be on this unit, that's eight drug agents. The unit will be supervised by a lieutenant from the Warren Police Department. This is highly unusual, most drug enforcement agency task force, which they have dozens throughout Ohio and Michigan, they're usually ran by a DEA supervisor. So this drug task force is going to be actually run by a Warren lieutenant, which means us as police chiefs, we're going to have even more say and more input with what this unit does, because it will not be run by a DEA supervisor, it will be run by one of our local departments, and that might change as time goes on. These- this Phantom drug unit is going to be working on large-scale narcotics cases, very complex cases involving money laundering, insurance fraud, foreign drug cartels. These are all things that exceed the scope of Sterling Heights or any local department. And once it gets to this level, we need the DEA's expertise in tracking down bad doctors, banks, and fraud, especially when money leaves the state or leaves the country. That exceeds what we can do in Sterling Heights, but it does not exceed what the DEA can do. So we're very proud of this. And why do we need this? Because there's a national emergency. If you look at this chart, you can see what the problem is. That blue line there, that's going straight up in the air, starting in 2014, 2015, that's synthetic opiates, that's the stuff you're hearing about, fentanyl, and this is what everyone is dying from. That's just in the last couple of years. That line goes straight up in the air, and we predict another bad year in 2018. These numbers go through 2017. Heroin is bad enough, cocaine has been kind of steady, methamphetamine is another problem we're seeing on the streets, a lot of influx of methamphetamine into the whole metro Detroit area, but by far, the synthetic opiates, fentanyl issue, we are dealing with it every single week in Sterling Heights, across Michigan and across the United States. This is a terrible, terrible problem that we're all trying to get our hands around. And for the first time, for the first time ever, drug overdoses are killing more people than car accidents. Car accidents used to be your number-one way of dying, and now it's drugs. This has just changed the last couple of years. So you're more likely to die from a drug overdose than being killed in a car accident. This is a problem. A three-pronged approach, it isn't just about the enforcement, but if you want to fight crime or fight drug crimes, education has to be part of it. I'm proud to say, we just started a new Smart Moves Initiative, our school program. Every single kid in Sterling Heights, every elementary kid in all 19 elementary schools is going to be receiving drug, anti-drug programming from our school officers, and that's a 10-week program, 19 elementary schools, and we just had our first nine schools graduate this fall, and we have 10 schools slated for our winter start time. So now every single kid in Sterling Heights is going to know exactly what these drugs are and what they'll do to the- to do to you. Enforcement, that second prong, we have a local in-house drug unit that takes care of street-level drug transactions here in Sterling Heights, and we also now will have two officers working for the DEA on task force. And the third prong of this is treatment, because if you don't treat an addict, going to jail does no good. Going to jail is a temporary fix, because the second they get out of jail without rehabilitation or treatment, they're going to use again, which means break into your house, break into your cars to get money to feed the addiction. So treatment has to be a part of this approach, and where I'm proud to say, another initiative that we've just started is the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. That is well on its way to starting, and we have a lot of community partners with that. We're going to be applying for a federal grant here in the next couple of months, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, and our Drug Free Coalition is going to be really advocating for treatment, support, and obviously, we also have a partnership with Families Against Narcotics and the Hope Night Handcuffs Program. And if you don't know, that program has been phenomenal. We have, on average, two to three people show up in our lobby every single month, addicts asking for help, and we get them help immediately. Within an hour, an angel shows up in the lobby of the police station, talks to the person, the person experiencing- the addicted person, and within an hour or two, they have inpatient treatment. They are taken out of our lobby and they're being treated. Unbelievable program, but that's that third prong, treatment. Our second initiative is ICAC, and that stands for Internet Crimes Against Children. This is a federal Department of Justice program, money goes out throughout the United States, and you can see here, there's 61 different agencies that are participating in this program. And in Michigan, it's the Michigan State Police. So the Michigan State Police accept the Department of Justice funds, and we have a large task force. There's 4,500 federal, state, and local law enforcement officers, and this unit focuses on crimes against children using the internet. We know that child sexual predators almost always start off with internet crimes involving children, underage children, sharing files, pictures, videos, and those people go on to offend and commit crimes against children. And again, the Michigan State Police is the ICAC task force partner here in the state of Michigan. There's 56 state troopers on that task force and 50 local officers throughout the state of Michigan. We're going to be having one of our youth bureau detectives, Lindsay Pappas, who is phenomenal at her job in dealing with juvenile crimes. She's going to be spending half of her week in Livonia at the ICAC offices, going over large-scale child predator cases, and a lot of those going right back here to Sterling Heights. And then the other half of her week is going to be spent on Sterling Heights cases. So the goal is that by her participating with this unit, task force, the resources are unbelievable. We have 100 different officers now working on cases. The computer ex- the computer access that we're going to have by having Detective Pappas being part of this unit is phenomenal. Again, the training is covered, the equipment is covered, ICAC overtime is covered by this task force, and we have access to Michigan State Police computer and technical units. So it's a huge win for us. Again, getting back to what, you know, those three tests for, you know, do these units provide any service to the city? And I believe they do. There's clearly improved safety for all of our residents with this DEA and ICAC unit. Increased service and operational ability, absolutely. The tools and resources and people we have available are phenomenal. And fiscal responsibility through a force multiplier, and when I say force multiplier, I'm giving one officer to this DEA Phantom unit, but I'm getting an eight-member drug team in return. So one for eight, that's a win. And plus all the DEA resources, and the same thing with the ICAC. Detective Pappas is going to be joining that unit, one officer doing part-time work, and I gained 100 investigators. That's a win for the city. Again, training being paid for, equipment and overtime. And those are our two new initiatives, and I'm very proud to get those off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And in addition to commending the chief for his good work in this area, I also want to thank the mayor and the city council for their support of the task force, particularly the DEA task force and the Drug Free Coalition. Council's been very active with that group, and we've spent a lot of time the last few years strategizing how to attack this problem, so I think we're headed on the right path. And lastly, Mayor, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And Mayor, you'll be glad to know that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is to conduct a swearing-in of new Sterling Heights council member, Henry Yanis. So to help us with that, I'm going to call up from our district court over in Shelby Township, Judge Doug Shepherd, to come in, come up and do the swearing-in. Henry, you can...
Before we begin, not to take the spotlight away from Henry, but we do have our newest judge, newest judge here for Sterling Heights, I'd like to introduce Judge Henry Lepore. Ready?
Do you read that? Do you need to be prepared?
I got it. You'd raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm-
I do solemnly affirm-
-that I will support-
That I will support-
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
-and that of the state of Michigan-
And that of the state of Michigan.
-and the charter-
And the charter.
-of the city of Sterling Heights-
The city of Sterling Heights.
-and that I will faithfully discharge-
And I will faithfully discharge-
-the duties of-
Duties of-
-the office of-
The office of-
-city council-
City council.
-in and for-
In and for-
-the city of Sterling Heights-
The city of Sterling Heights.
-county of Macomb-
County of Macomb.
-state of Michigan-
State of Michigan.
-according to the best-
According to the best.
-of my knowledge-
Of my knowledge.
...and ability.
And ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Come on up and take your seat, Henry.
Councilman Yanis, I should say. So, we are going to, I always forget, do we go, do we let Henry go last? I think we let Henry go last. If anybody wants to make any comments from my colleagues, Mayor Pro Tim Saroski.
I'll start. So I'd like to welcome you, Councilman Yanis. I've known you for a very long time, and I do respect and very much admire your knowledge in government, and I think you're going to bring us a lot of- a lot of help with the state, and I am very happy to have you on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Saroski. Anyone else, council? Mrs. Zerco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just want to welcome Mr. Yanis on board. It'll be difficult not to call you Henry up here, but that's okay. But yes, I think you're going to be a great addition to our council, and I look forward to working with you on some of the projects that we have going on right now.
Thank you.
So, thank you for accepting the challenge.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, thank you.
I, as well, would like to welcome you, Councilman Yanis. Just know that, you know, all of us up here are available to you, and I think that you're just going to hit the ground running, and it will be a very easy transition because of your experience at the state level, and I really look forward to working with you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
I also would like to welcome Councilman Yanis. We've known each other for a long time, and I-
Mrs. Arco and I promise not to kick you or punch you too much, and I'm sure you're going to contribute a great deal to this table. Thank you.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, I have a very bad cold. Henry, Councilman Yanis, I'm sure you're going to do a great job up here. As we were saying before the meeting, you're moving up into the big leagues now here in Sterling Heights, and we appreciate all the work you're going to do. You're going to do a great job.
Yeah, Henry, you know, it's a pleasure to have you on board here. We're lucky to have you. I supported you in your race for state senator, and, you know, that didn't work out, but your loss, I think, is our gain. And I know it's kind of probably bittersweet for you, but here we are, and I think you're just going to be a tremendous councilman for the residents of Sterling Heights. You have been for six years a great representative, served the community as a firefighter. We're going to hear a great presentation about the work that firefighters do, and so I have no doubt that you'll be as good a public servant up here as you were for your, you know, many years serving in the fire department. So, I feel like we're very lucky to have you. So, welcome aboard, and if there's anything you want to say, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you very much. I'm really excited to be a part of this team. You're absolutely right. This is, even though I lost my last election, I think this is a very positive thing for me. I've been serving the city of Sterling Heights since 1995 in various ways, and I know each and every one of you, and I've known you all for quite a long time, and I look forward to working with you and doing great things for the city of Sterling Heights. I always bragged up in Lansing that I represented both the third and fourth largest cities in the state. Most people don't realize, Macomb County has the third and fourth largest cities in the state, and the growth of Sterling Heights and the way that we've grown in a very positive way, I think reflects how thoughtful city councils have been over the past, so I really appreciate everything that this city council has did. And of course, as the chief pointed out, you know, we are the sixth safest large city in the country, which is absolutely, absolutely amazing. So, that just goes, shows the strong work that the employees of the city have done, because really, in the end, it's about investing in people, and I think we do that very well as a city. I would be amiss if I did not recognize a few people in the audience, starting with my wife, Jane, is here. My daughter Allison, my stepdaughter Cassidy, is here with us, and many, many friends, including friends from the fire department that I worked with many years ago. So, I really appreciate the support. I appreciate the applause. It may be the last time I get any kind of...
One more.
...like that.
I want more.
I know Harry Truman said, "If you want a friend in Washington, you can get a dog," but he never served on Sterling Heights City Council, so I'm very, I'm very happy to be here. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. One more big round of applause. Welcome aboard, Henry. We're going to move on to our next presentation tonight, and this is a presentation of the sixteenth recipient of a Sterling Heights Fire Department Survival Coin. We have a presentation from our fire chief, Chris Martin. Chief Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, council. Special thanks to, congratulations to Councilman Yanis.
Thank you, Chief.
I look forward to working with you. I've got another good story for you tonight. November eighth, 2018, John and Wanda Coppins, forty-one-year residents of the city of Sterling Heights, married for fifty-one years. John himself, a veteran of the Air Force, were at home. Wanda Coppins told John that tonight it's chicken and vegetables for dinner, and John wasn't having that, he wanted ham and cheese, but they didn't have any bread, so he had to go to the local Kroger's, Eighteen and Dequender, to get bread. And while he was shopping, he unfortunately collapsed in cardiac arrest. So, I can tell you that there's some good places to collapse in cardiac arrest. Middle of a grocery store is probably not the best, but luckily for him, if I could have Darren Enda please come up. Luckily for John, eight feet behind him was Darren Enda. Darren is no stranger to the city of Sterling Heights or the Sterling Heights Fire Department. Darren and I go way back. Darren is a employee of Universal Macomb Ambulance Service since 1990. He was, became a paramedic in ninety-two, and in 1996, Darren became a critical care paramedic and a critical care paramedic instructor, and since then has trained more than two-hundred-and-fifty medics in critical care paramedic work. Now, critical care paramedic work is taking those most, the most ill patients from hospital to hospital, so you really got to be on your game to do that. Darren has worked at many Sterling Fest, coordinating the first aid there, and Darren spent most of his field career in what we call the GeoCar Sterling Heights. He was one of the four ambulances in Sterling Heights, so Darren and I have been on hundreds or, I don't even know, maybe thousands of runs together. And so, Darren was about eight feet behind Mr. Coppins when he collapsed, and I think in about a second and a half, he was able to start CPR. Somebody called 911. Those three minutes between the time that the fire department was notified and got on the scene, I'm sure Darren probably felt was probably thirty minutes. But Darren is, without a doubt, the reason why we have this tonight, so I would like to turn the floor over to Darren to say a few words.
Thank you, chief. In the twenty-eight years that I've worked in EMS, very often incidents like that do not have the ending that they did for this gentleman. I can only say this, I thank God that he's done well, that he's here with us today. I thank God that I was in the right spot at the right time, because dealing with patients in cardiac arrest, sudden cardiac events, timing is everything. It's absolutely critical. And when the fire department arrived on scene and took over care, I can tell you, based on all my years of experience, it was five-star quality care. It was top-notch, absolutely top-notch, and I commend Lieutenant Schwartz and his crew for the effort that they gave to save this gentleman's life. I'd also like to thank all the providers at Beaumont Troy and the ICU. Basically, EMS as a whole starts in the field. It starts with CPR, early defibrillation, early activation of the emergency response system, and I would encourage those in the audience who are not trained in CPR to please do so. That's one way you can really contribute and help your community out, to become certified in CPR. Thank you.
So, thank you, Darren. Enough can't be said about your role in this and the life you've saved. So, Darren's doing CPR, Engine Five and Squad Five get dispatched from Eighteen and Ryan right down the street, Rescue One from Seventeen and Van Dyke. On Engine Five that day was Lieutenant Vinnie Schwartz, as Darren already said, FEO Brian Kinsicki, Lieutenant Vinnie Schwartz and Brian Kinsicki are in the crowd tonight, firefighter Lance Stevens, who isn't here with us tonight. On the ambulance was firefighter Kevin Cranston and Corey Sanakis. Kevin is with us this evening. And on the rescue truck was Lieutenant Mark Wellhausen and Tom Grady. Tom is with us this evening in the crowd. So, they got on the scene, and as Darren said, they took over patient care. And I can tell you that, reading this, you'll probably hear miracle, remarkable. This was thirty-nine minutes of care right there at Kroger. This team would not quit. Twelve defibrillations, which is absolutely unheard of. I think there's probably a Guinness Book of World Record, but when we're defibrillating somebody twelve times, they're not coming back, and this is just, it's just amazing, the care that they did, and it's without a doubt the reason why we have this availability of having him here tonight. In the crowd, as Darren said also, part of this is, we bring him to the hospital, and they get extended care and quality care. So, four weeks at Beaumont Troy. We have Milka and Michelle in the audience that were part of his cath team, and on a couple of occasions had to provide service for him there. So, they got to meet him again tonight, and I know Mr. Coppins is meeting some of these people for the first time that he was conscious, so it's been a bit of an emotional evening already. So, on behalf of the Sterling Heights Fire Department, at this time, I'd like to invite up Lieutenant Vinnie Schwartz and Mr. Coppins, so that Vinnie can present him with his survivor coin.
Mr. Coppins, Lieutenant Vinnie Schwartz, I'd like to, on behalf of the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department, I'd like to present you with the sixteenth survival coin.
Thank you.
My name is John Coppins. I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for over forty years, and although I'm honored to be here tonight, I'm honored to be anywhere. So, but I'm not here to be honored, I'm here to honor your fire department. Excuse me.
Now, take your time, sir.
And the first responders, and most of all, Darren, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Taylor, I'd like to have his wife, Wanda, and his son, Sean, come to the podium, if you don't mind, they'd like to say a few words.
Absolutely. John's story could have had a different ending if he hadn't gone to Kroger to do some shopping on November the eighth. When John walked into that store that evening, he had no idea that a man a few feet behind him would be responsible for starting the process of saving his life. When John went into cardiac arrest and collapsed on the floor, this man, an off-duty paramedic named Darren Enda, went into action and performed CPR on him until the Sterling Heights Fire Department arrived. They rushed him to Beaumont Hospital, working non-stop to keep his heart beating, maintaining blood flow to his brain and his vital organs. John spent four weeks in the hospital. He had outstanding doctors and nurses who took care of him and brought him back to good health, but we never forgot that he may not have survived this scary and life-threatening incident if he had not been fortunate enough to be where he was when it happened. We know, and the doctors at Beaumont Hospital know, that the outcome for John's recovery would have been different if CPR had not been started immediately after his collapse and the defibrillator used to keep his heart beating. We never know what's going to happen to us or where we will be when we are or if we are faced with an emergency situation. One thing for sure, the first responders who work in our city of Sterling Heights do an outstanding job. I want them to know that I appreciate their hard work, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart for saving my husband's life. Thank you.
And I'm his son, Sean Coppins, and I just want to make a, you know, quick remark in that so many people were involved in helping my father, but it all started with Darren Enda. Thank God he was there at the time that he was. And, you know, I just want to echo what he had said, is that, you know, everybody can be trained in CPR, and, you know, you can be a hero, you can save somebody's life, you know. You don't know the power that you have, but it's important to get the CPR training, so that if you're in that situation, you can help somebody out. So, if you've got spare time and, you know, you've got the ability to do it, take your CPR training courses. I'm signing up. I know my mom's going to be signing up, probably my dad, too. We want to pay it forward that way. You hear a lot of people say that, and they might buy the coffee for somebody by, you know, standing behind them in line, but I think a better way to pay it forward is to train to save a life when you're in that situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor, that's all I have. I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you very much, chief. I'll turn it over to my colleagues on council. Anyone want to make any comments? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, this is the sixteenth presentation of the Survival Coin, and you see every day just how much of an impact both Universal Ambulance and our fire department have had on the residents of Sterling Heights. I want to, you know, say thank you to the department for everything they do. I think it's wonderful whenever they have a survivor come here to get their coin. You really see the lives you touch and the work you do every day. So, from city council, I'm sure, I want to say thank you to our great public service. Thank you so much.
And I also want to thank our fire department. Of all the places we could always live in the state, I am just very grateful that we're here, and I know Mr. Coppins is, too, and I'm so glad that you are, Sean and Mary Ann and Wanda. I'm so glad to see you guys here, and congratulations. Thank you to Universal. Thank you to the nurses in ICU, and nurse myself. Yes, it's extremely important, as Sean said, to learn CPR, and it's just one little thing that we can do, so I want to echo that as well. So, thank you, guys, and congratulations again.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Yanis.
Mr. Mayor, as I said earlier, it's really about investing in people, and when I got on the fire department in 1995, we really stressed, Chief Charles at the time really stressed, the importance of training, and this city has really invested in its people, and the fire department, police department, public safety have really taken their training seriously. And the fact that we invest in the training budget is very important, and frankly, I think we can probably do better. We need to do better. We need to keep those skills up. We need to stay ahead of the curve, and it's for results like this is why we need to do this, and my hats off to my colleagues at the fire department.
Thank you, Councilman Yanis. Anyone else going on? So, well, chief, again, congratulations on a wonderful presentation, a great night tonight. Whenever these happens, it really, to me, what hits home is that there are so many different layers of protection that somebody needs. They need that first response has to be from the residents, and Sean, you couldn't have really said it any better, if you want to help out, go out and do it and get yourself trained, so that you can respond in a situation like this. If it happened at home, if it would have happened somewhere else where Darren wasn't there, who knows what would have happened? And, you know, he was lucky to have you there, Darren, and we're lucky to have a company like Universal. Duncan Walker's in the audience tonight. Just anything we've ever needed from you guys, you've always been there, so it's not a surprise that you would step up in a situation like that. Our fire department is the best in the state of Michigan, and if you are going to suffer something like that, there's no better place. So, you're a forty-one-year resident, you're going to be a forty-two-year resident, and so on, and we're lucky to have you here, Mr. Coppins, and I thank you for coming up and sharing with, sharing your story with us today. You know, it does hit home a little bit for me, because I get to sit next to Mary Ann at the office every day, and so when Sean told me that he was going to be up here, man, it really does hit home, that these are people that are our family, our friends, and to have our fire department out there doing the job they do is really special. So, thank you, chief. Thank you to the medical professionals for being here. It's always great to see, like I said, it's the first responders, but it's also the residents or the citizens who see you in distress, then the first responders, the doctors, the nurses, the care professionals, and we've seen with the other fifteen of these that, you know, not that you're going to have reunions all the time, but they remember, and I'm sure you'll never forget. So, thank you, sir. And chief, as always, congratulations, great job, and one more big round of applause for everyone involved.
Mayor, one last thing. I'm going to give the family a gift card for free CPR for the whole family. It's part of the Sterling Heights Fire Department, so we'll take them up on their office.
Awesome. Very nice. Thank you, chief. Let's take just a brief recess, maybe three or four minutes, and let the chamber fill out or go out, and we'll be back in about three or four minutes. All right, I'd like to call this meeting back into order. And we'll move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
They moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak under communications from citizens? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Looks like we got a pretty low turnout. I think that's because people know it's the birthday of one of the greatest citizens of Sterling Heights that ever existed. So I think they were thinking we shouldn't have a meeting tonight. It was supposed to fall to another date. But I guess we couldn't get that down. I want to know if anyone asked the police chief, Special Mike Radke, he's our police person, the chief spoke about education being one of the factors up here for giving drugs, the education process, and the process they're going to bring up in the schools. I want to know if anybody asked, what is the difference between the DARE program and this new program? It's just because it doesn't seem like the DARE program worked, as we can all see by his little graph up there, the chart swinging up. So I want to know if anybody asked that question of him. Number three, residents, you guys are going to notice, you probably noticed this already, I'm surprised Mr. Vanderpool didn't bring it up, but the, the big oval is going up on Hall Road there. People, please don't complain. You had your chance to do something about it, you guys didn't do it. So please don't complain to me, because I voiced my opinion at that time, that it was wasting money. And we didn't need it. But it's going up, so please do not complain about that. But my main reason for coming out here today is the last meeting, at the last meeting, Mrs. Arco brought up something that I think she was trying to appease the people by, because the people were saying that the process of putting Mr. Yanez up there, the appointment process was not looked at as being fair. It was looking at being shady, a little underground, a little underhanded. And she said that the charter didn't really give the city council any direction on how to appoint a person to the city council. They just said that it had to be done within 60 days. That's what she said. But when I'm coming up here to say, Mrs. Arco, instead of complaining to us that the charter doesn't give you any direction on how to appoint a new city council, meaning person, it's your duty not to complain to us, but to put direction into the city charter for this council and future councils on how this should be handled. And like we said before, this process wasn't handled very fairly to anybody who put in the application. The last one definitely wasn't put any fair. The one before that, when the mayor told Mr. Judd that he didn't deserve to be up in here, when he was the highest vote getter, the second highest vote getter to winners, the process has to be changed. And it's up to you guys at this point to put the direction into the charter. And that's another question. Mr. Vanderpool, when is the charter yet looked at, maybe for revision? And do the people have a say in that? Because I never remember seeing the charter changed, because a few things may need to be changed in that charter. So when's the next time the charter gets at least looked at to be revised? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mrs. Early.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Mr. Vanderpool and audience. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Yanez for his appointment. However, the way it is done, you are sitting there, and I congratulate you, and I hope that you will represent every resident of the city, no matter the party that they belong to. I look forward to seeing you doing the job well. Thank you. Also, I want to mention, I was approached regarding an issue going in our city, and it's the Fordman Wood Condominiums project. Some of you are aware of the project. And it was brought up to my attention that the project is being planned to be built in a section that has a nature center, it's a wetland. And the residents who attended the planning commission asked not to build anything in that area. However, the planning commission approved the project, and it moved to the other sections of the process, which is certain permits. Those have not been approved yet, and that is why I'm here. I'm here to ask you to be the ones that will read, study this project, and see what can be done. I went to the city website, and it says there, on January 9, 2015, that green as we can be at Sterling Heights, named a three-city US every year since 1985. One of the points that the residents bring up is, we are a three-city, I don't know if we are still, because I couldn't find anything else about Sterling Heights being still a three-city. We are asking the residents in that area, which is north of 14 mile between Mount and Ryan, they are asking, this is the project that was presented to the planning commission. This is the area that is a nature center. Here in the project, they are removing all this area and building houses. Will you be able to please ask the departments that are in the process to approve or not this project, to consider the needs of the residents, the petition of the residents? Because we know, when we move to certain place, trees may have been removed, as some of you, the residents, yes. But this was, and it can be saved, if you please advocate for the residents. It's seven houses that are being built, that will be built if there is approval from MDEQ and the other departments. All I'm asking is, be an advocate for the residents, study the project. Seven houses can be, don't need to be built. I know the interest of the company that wants to be built, to build them is money. But can those trees being safe and continuous protecting the nature center that is there? We claim to be a three-city. Don't keep cutting the trees. If the company or the constructor will at least agree not to remove those trees and save that area, I know the residents will be grateful with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Early. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Mayor, just quickly on the development that was just referenced by Mrs. Early. The developer does have to comply with the tree, the city's tree preservation ordinance. That is a requirement. That's not something that's waived in any way, shape, or form. So trees will be saved where possible. And where not possible, they'll be required to replant and/or contribute to our tree preservation fund, in which trees will be planted elsewhere around the city. As a tree city, we replant and plant new trees, thousands of new trees every year. If you look at some of our roadway projects now, those alone have hundreds of trees along them, whenever we have a new roadway project. In addition to all of our private developments, you may recall the city council passed a very, should I say, stricter tree ordinance, landscaping ordinance, a few years ago. And that is having a significant positive impact on the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Koschubski?
We do have one item to time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any reports or new business? Mrs. Arco.
Mayor Taylor, I just want to clarify. Mr. Jefferson mentioned that I was complaining about the charter. And actually, I want, I don't want anybody to get the impression that I was complaining, because I wasn't. I was just stating a fact. And certainly not complaining about it. I have no problems with the way appointments are done.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
You know, I agree with Ms. Early. We have to do more to replant some of the trees in Sterling Heights. And I know that I've talked with administration, and we're trying to come up with some ideas, because my neighborhood, which is at the 14-mile in Van Dyke area, you know, Emerald Ash Bore really devastated it after Dutch Elm disease. So I remember one down my street just recently, and I counted, I have, there's seven large trees, sidewalk trees, in my street. So it's a problem that we have here in Sterling Heights, just because of nature. And we're going to work to kind of fix it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else? If not, just one clarification. Two, the council doesn't have any direct input into the charter. We can't change the charter. We can, we can create a charter question that would then go to the voters. But I think we'd have to do, I think we need super majority for that. I could be wrong. But in any event, we can't amend the charter by ourselves. And any resident that wants to, there is a process to get a ballot initiative going to amend the charter. So, but there's no, it's not like every five, or 10, or 15 years, or whatever. There doesn't, there isn't a charter convention that comes up every so often. But if there are changes that need to be made, we would certainly entertain those. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved. Support.
They moved and supported. Mrs. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Arco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0. We will adjourn into closed session, and we will not be returning. Thank you.